Hello, I'm Chelmsford Town Manager Paul Cohen, and welcome to another edition of the Town Managers' Roundtable. Today's program, we're going to focus on the warrant articles for the February 24th special town meeting. There's a total of six articles that will be considered at the Chelmsford High School Gymnasium that evening. The meeting starts at 7:30, and there'll be ample room for social distancing. So again, if people can come out, we ask you to come out. And even if you're not a town meeting representative, you're able to participate in the debate that evening. I'm joined today by two of my colleagues in town government. Finance Director John Souza.
Hello, Paul.
Welcome, John, thanks for coming today. And Community Development Director Evan Belansky.
Thank you, good to be back.
I guess we're all veteran town officials at this point in time, well over a decade of service plus to the community. So why don't we just get started and get into it? As I said, there's six articles, and the primary purpose of this meeting was to address the redevelopment of the UMass Lowell West Campus at 255 Princeton Street, which has sat vacant for quite some time, and there's now a major multifamily redevelopment proposal. And those articles are at the end of the warrant, but because there was a special town meeting scheduled, we did some, I guess we'd call "housekeeping," or some ministerial things that were asking the town meeting to approve at this point in February, some of which can't wait till the town meeting in April. So with that, I'll start off. The first article pertains to an easement for the property off of Ledge Road, which is known as Esther Drive, to create a bus turnaround for students who live on Ledge Road. Here's a map here that shows the proposed easement plan. And what's going on here is there's a need to improve student safety, because if many of you are aware, the neighborhood of Ledge Road has experienced a significant increase in volume of commercial truck traffic over the years as a result of the increased activities at the quarum, I'm sorry, at the increased activities at the quarries related to the new asphalt plant that's been constructed at the Westford Town Line. And so, school officials, town officials, and most importantly, the neighbors have really been working with the town over the last, you know, couple of years now to improve safety. And we had previously gone to town meeting to get an easement off of Ledge Road. Then when we approached the property owner where the property had had a transaction from whence it had started, the property owner also owned another property off of Esther Drive, and through a series of discussions with the select board and other stakeholders, it was determined that the Esther Drive would be a more appropriate roadway. So what'll be involved here is the town meeting will be asked to authorize the select board to take the property as an easement. So we won't, the town won't accumulate ownership of the property. The private property owners on Esther Drive will continue to own the roadway. But what the town will do is the town will put a surface of batuminous concrete over the roadway, and then provide maintenance and snow and ice removal. So in essence, it's a benefit to the town, and obviously a benefit to the property owners by the town's maintenance and snow removal on the roadway. So again, there's no cash appropriation at the town meeting, but again, it provides enhanced public safety for the students. The reason we're bringing it again in February is that we hope that if this is approved, once the weather conditions allow, we'll be able to go out there and improve the roadway, which is really now currently a driveway, to sufficient standards to allow school buses to go down, turn around, and then hopefully get those kids on a bus this spring rather than waiting till the fall, start of the next school year. That's Article One. Article Two is a request by the town to authorize a select board to acquire a parcel on Fourth Avenue. And this really falls, you can see the parcel there, it's that little rectangle to the center right of the map on the screen. And I'm going to turn this over to John Souza, who's our finance director, who's been really leading this effort from the very beginning with the property owner.
Thank you, Paul. So this article came about, the property owner of the small parcel that's outlined there in green, the rectangular parcel shown on the screen, contacted the town manager's office and myself last fall, and just indicated that he no longer wished to own this parcel, doesn't have a use for it, and wished to donate it to the town. So in working with town council under this section of law, it requires, it's a two-step process, it requires a vote by the select board to accept the, to accept the land donation. And then finally, it requires a vote at town meeting to also approve the land donation. The parcel is just over 1,600 square feet in size, and it has an assessed value of just over $4,000. And the interesting thing is, when you looked at that map that was on the screen, right to the immediate right of this parcel that's outlined, the town owns a parcel, just coincidentally was acquired back in 2014, it's the exact same size as the one that's being considered at this town meeting. So there would be two parcels if this, if town meeting, you know, votes affirmatively for this, you would have two small parcels there that may be of interest to a neighbor, a Butter in the neighborhood.
Yeah, if you combine those two parcels, they're roughly the size of the standard house parcel in that area of town.
So maybe, we think it may be of interest. And a question may come up, and I can explain this at town meeting, you know, why wouldn't we go the traditional route of doing a tax-taking and then a foreclosure case? And the reason, a couple of reasons there is, it's beneficial for us to work with the property owner when we can, because we'll save legal fees and land court costs. And the other thing is, sometimes when you have a resident that's been, you know, in town for a long number of years, they really don't want to see their name in the, you know, we're required to do a, right, we're required to do a, an ad if we were to do a tax-taking, and, you know, has a certain stigma to it, and people don't want to see their name in, you know, the newspaper where they've lived in town for so many years and paid taxes.
Yeah, and it's a prolonged process, it takes about
It is.
three years.
Especially post-pandemic, it's not uncommon for a case to require at least three to four years now to go through land court fully.
Okay. And then again, if, once the town obtains, if this is approved and attains the parcel, if the town were to go to dispose of the parcel, i.e. sell it to one of Butter and so forth, it would have to go back to town meeting for that authorization to do that. So, so again, what this is, is again, it's a way of expediting the transfer of the parcel from the property owner to the town, who otherwise could just simply not pay taxes. And we've had these before town meeting periodically, so it's not an unusual request. So, so that is sort of the action on Article Two, which is Fourth Avenue. Article Three is a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Chelmsford and its Public Safety Dispatches Union. This period, as you can see, covers mostly in the past. It would go back to July 1st of 2019, and then the contract period would expire roughly five months from now on June 30th, 2022. The contract settlement is, pay schedule is in line with what other town employees have received during this period, including non-union employees, which is roughly 2% per year. So the question becomes, well, why is it 0.4 and 2 as opposed to 2.2 and 2? And the reason of that is, it's a requirement of state law. Under state law, the town meeting can only appropriate monies for the prior fiscal year for a contract settlement, or the current fiscal year. So we're now going back into a second year with, in terms of a process of a three-year cycle. In working with Labor Council, it was determined that the way to basically provide that level of increase over that three-year period was to do 0.4 and 2. And so that's what the agreement provides, which would otherwise be a 2.2 and 2. And then the other part of it is, okay, well, if you did the 0 the first year, well, what about that 2% raise they would have received in that first year? Which we, again, can't legally do, but in a sense of fairness, we basically said that roughly approximates $1,500 per dispatcher for that period. So what will happen is, is any dispatcher who was employed at the beginning of the prior fiscal year, meaning as of July 1, 2020, would receive a one-time payment of $1,500, and then they'd get the retroactive pay for the last fiscal year, which would be the 4%, because remember, you would have had the pay schedule that existed on July 1st of 2019. If it had gone up 2% plus another 2%, that would have been 4%. So that, that one-year schedule, the town accountant calculates the amount for that year, and then basically, the current year would be another 2%. She calculates that amount, and when you add up all those figures, it comes out to $82,050 for the nine dispatchers who were there, you know, during that period. So that's how the agreement works, and so if town meeting approves this, then the town accountant will cut a retroactive check to each of the employees, and then the pay schedule for the remaining, of this current fiscal year, the remaining five months would be on the revised pay schedule. And then basically, we're now back at the bargaining table for new agreements going forward as of July 1 for this current year. And at this point in time, all of the town's unions have agreements that expire as of June 30th of this current fiscal year, except for the Public Safety Police Superior Officers, where we're still outstanding in going back now almost six years. And we're hopeful that the decision from the Labor Relations Board would come down within the next several months. So that's, that's sort of what happens under dispatchers' agreement. So again, we want to bring this now, because again, we have reached an agreement, and under the provisions of state law, the town needs to bring an agreement to the next scheduled town meeting. And it's good really to get this approved, and then what we can then do is, with this new schedule and agreement in effect, when we prepare the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, when John and I and others are preparing the budget with the police chief, we'll have this new schedule as the base, and then, once an agreement is reached with the unions, we'll then come back for a town meeting approval to ratify a new contract, like the others, at a future town meeting. We're not allowed under the provisions of the Chelmsford Town Charter to put money into a budget in advance of a contract settlement. So what we do is, when we have an agreement like this where it's outstanding, we put money in a stabilization fund, which is the funding source for this article, and then we then transfer from the stabilization fund for the town meeting to approve the contract. And so that's what's taking place under this article. And again, it's timely, and again, you know, we're, we have at this point, and I should note that all of the articles on the warrant have the approval of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. And if people are interested in watching those detailed discussions, they're available on Chelmsford Telemedia's website on demand. We then move on to Article Four, which is a request for an ice rink refrigeration system for the Chelmsford Forum. This, again, is a timely one that really cannot wait until the spring town meeting. And the reason for that is, is we're seeking to replace the ice rink refrigeration system in the forum that was installed back in 1985. And we recently had a malfunction of a control boards on that system that led to the closure of the forum for a week right prior to Christmas last month. And fortunately, we were able to find somebody who could service the software and components of that system, which was quite an endeavor to get that system back operational, which is where it stands today. Otherwise, we would have had to been out there and, and basically leasing a generator with a portable chilling system, which would have been very costly to both operate with diesel fuel, as well as the lease of the equipment during a period. To sort of bring you to, well, how did this come about? We've been in the process for the last couple of years of replacing the ice form chiller system. And there you see in the photo, you see the technician doing the repairs to the board, and then the bottom left, you can actually see the diesel-generated chillers, there are two of them, that chill the ice system with all those electronic components running that whole system at the forum. As I mentioned, for the last couple of years, we've been working to replace this system because we knew it was at the end of its useful life. And because of the issues of technology, as well as the green and fossil fuel-minded culture of today, we're in the process of converting it from a, from a natural gas-powered system to an electrical-powered system. And we had hoped, in fact, we were at town meeting to get approval to put solar panels on the roof of the forum to power that system. Well, unfortunately, the structural analysis of the 1965 building determined that with the today's codes and snow loads, that we could not safely put solar panels on the roof of the forum building, because the weight of the solar panels and then the weight of the snow load would have created an unsafe threat of condition. So we're now looking at the site, you know, to see if we can get ground-mounted arrays either on, you know, on the open space that's towards the area where the school buses had been parked for a number of years out there, or perhaps one of those parking canopies where you see installed, where basically they, you go to the parking lot and then you put the arrays on the ceiling. Well, while we were doing that analysis, we had this, this shutdown of the forum, and the cause of that wasn't just the equipment, you know, just got too old. We had an electrical power disruption where one phase of the three-phase power was operational, which created the gum-up of the electrical components. It's much like if you had a power surge at your home or power disruption. So basically, a power surge came in with the drop to one phase, and it damaged the compressor and the, and the control panel board. So again, we worked diligently with the rink operator and technician to get this operational. We found a fellow who fortunately serviced this type of unit and a few other rinks that are still operational in the New England area. He came out and failed, you know, and fixed the system. And then there's still some damage to the, one of the compressors, and so we're working with our insurance company for recovery to get this going. But the important thing is, the equipment is quite aged, it needs to be replaced, we're in the process of replacing it. And again, the reason to bring it now is that you really want to do this work in the off-season. You know, basically, the forum shuts down in April, and you want to get this work done between, you know, the shutdown of the season until really October, when the new season's done, or as close to October as you can get, as opposed to shutting the facility down during the peak months of operations. So that's why we're coming now, as opposed to, gee, can't this wait till April town meeting? Well, you just can't, you know, April town meeting would, we really leave April town meeting in May, and then by the time you'd get the contractor out there and the, the lead time for the equipment, we want, we need to, and we are going to do it now. So again, the story here is, it's a conversion of the ice rink refrigeration system from natural gas to electric. Again, the other thing is, it is a sensitive system, because it runs on ammonia with glycol. So that was the other concern, is that if the system isn't running properly in terms of the components, you can create a health concern, because, you know, particularly if you're dealing with ammonia. So again, you want to get a modernized equipment. We also need to work with National Grid to get a new transformer onto the site, because right now, you know, the transformer that's at the site is aged and really can't meet the 408 amps power that you need to, to run this size equipment. So there'll be, there'll also be work with National Grid to install a new transformer out to the system. And then, you know, you've got a procurement process where, you know, we'll have, you know, the right-sized equipment, and it'll probably be what you see on the screen, a two, two-component system. With that way, you hopefully have some little bit of redundancy, you know, lose everything if the, if the system goes down. And that's sort of partly why, when the system did fail with the control panel back in December, we were down for a week. Part of it was, the system was operational in three days, but when you, at that time, the temperatures weren't as cold as it is right now. So we lost the ice surface, and it took about a full week to get everything back into playing condition. So again, the request is 1.53 million, and John, have you touched upon, this would be a borrowing?
Yes.
And talk about how that plays out?
Sure, it should be a long-term borrowing, and we're currently analyzing whether it would make more sense to borrow it over 10 to 15 years, some in that timeframe. And it's something, assuming that town meeting approves it, we would then look to borrow it, you know, before the end of the fiscal year, so.
Okay. So that's, so that's really what's, what's going on here. Again, the, you know, it's just a critical component, and again, one we had our eyes on. So that's Article Four. So again, we're hopeful that these articles, you know, will, will get addressed within the first half hour to hour of the meeting. And then the bulk of the meeting really is Article Five, which is the establishment of a overlay district, which is a, basically a zoning change for the UMass West parcel, which is located at 255 Princeton Street. It's shown there on the map, you know, it's across from Dartmouth Street, if you've been on Princeton Street, you know, right near where the old Glenview used to be, and, and this is a major development. And so I'm going to turn it over now to Evan Belansky, our Community Development Director, to sort of bring everybody a synopsis of what's transpiring over there, and what this article really does do.
Sure, so thank you. So I thought it'd be helpful to kind of set the stage about, you know, how we, how the town found itself engaged in this process. So about five years ago, as everyone knows, this was under the control and ownership of UMass Lowell. And about five years ago, UMass Lowell, working with the state, surpluses property, it went to public auction, and it sold for $3.2 million. So at that point, and still to this day, it is privately held, it's not owned by the town, it's not managed by the state or UMass at this point. And the private owner, since then, engaged with some private development entities, which brought Triono Crow Residential to the table in Chelmsford. And about six months ago, in May of 2021, Triono Crow Residential formally engaged with the town, starting with meetings with the planning board and select board. That process started with joint meetings, then moved to meetings with the individual boards. This process over the last six months also included robust public engagement, whereby Triono Crow met with their neighbors, specifically Windermere and Meadowwood Condo Associations. They also met with their residential neighborhood of Butters on Princeton Street and Wright Street, and followed that up with individual Butter meetings, you know, one-on-one Butter meetings. And all of that effort was brought back in front of the planning board and select board to create a project-based rezoning proposal. And what I mean by project-based is that, unlike traditional zoning, where town meeting is asked to, to review and adopt zoning that would provide potential opportunities, in this particular case, Triono Crow was proposing a very specific project. They presented plans, visuals, graphics, and very detailed reports and studies to support what they were proposing. I also want to, just want to take a step back, that existing options for the town range from proceeding with existing zoning, which is single-family, which will likely produce about 22 single-family homes. Also, under the State Zoning Act, there are uses that are defined as exempt from local zoning. Those typically include educational, religious, institutional, things of that nature, in which there's limited oversight at the local, at the local level for purposes of zoning. The third option is 40B, and while the town is still compliant with being over 10%, we've been informed by the state that the 2022, sorry, the 2020 census information will likely be officially published by the State Department of Housing and Community Development at the end of this calendar year, or the beginning of 2023. At that point, our projections assume or anticipate that will fall under 10% by about 44 units. And the final option is a rezoning option, which kind of summarizes what the last six-month-plus process has been. So with that, the, the proposal for town meeting is to adopt an overlay that would keep the underlying single-family zoning in place. The overlay, as I mentioned, is project-based. The project in and of itself contemplates a total of 394 dwelling units, of which 340 would be Triono Crow residential units, which would all be rental. And then the remaining 54 units would be a partnership with the Chelmsford Housing Authority in their development arm called Choice. The, the Choice component is an age-restricted rental project, so as I mentioned, a total of 394 dwelling units, a variety of types, sizes, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and some three-bedrooms. There is a, there's a senior housing component, as well as an affordable component. The zoning process that the overlay will be presented to a town meeting requires a simple majority vote at town meeting based upon some State Zoning Act revisions that took place within the last several years. Normally, a town meeting vote is a supermajority vote. This particular article, because it is proposing to be multifamily with an affordability component and minimum of 15 units per acre, will be a by right, a town, I'm sorry, a supermajority town meeting vote. The other details related to the, to the zoning, it regulates density at a minimum of 15 units per acre. It regulates building and parking coverage. It regulates setbacks, building, maximum building height. It requires a minimum percentage of, of open space. It regulates parking, whereby it mirrors the underlying multifamily parking ratios. It also regulates park landscaping, buffering, things of that nature. Other items that I wanted to cover is that, I think in summary, you know, the process that has led to the, the creation and crafting of the overlay district, and ultimately presentation at town meeting, has been robust, has been collaborative. As I mentioned, both the select board and planning board have been directly engaged with, with the proponent. They've heard significant comments from neighborhoods, residents, as well as town officials. And during this process, based upon those comments, Triono Crow's plan and proposal has been refined and revised, which has led to multiple iterations of the proposed zoning bylaw. My final comment would be that while town meeting is not voting on a development agreement, part of this process that supports the project-based rezoning includes a development agreement. The development agreement is a, is a legally binding agreement that runs with the land between Triono Crow and the, and the select board on behalf of the town, that outlines and identifies a comprehensive package of public benefits. And those are monetary in nature, they range from payments to the Inclusionary Housing Fund, payment to the schools for, for their use, and significant payments towards traffic mitigation.
Great, so I mean, it's a major project, and I think, and I think we should note at this time, that the, both the planning board, I'm sorry, the planning board, the select board, and the Finance Committee are recommending favorable action on this zoning change and project. And I think sort of behind it all, having witnessed what's taken places over the last several months, is something is going to go there.
Exactly.
And I think that you're never going to have a project that's going to satisfy everybody, but I think, as you noted, they've met with the residential Butters, and basically, you know, are installing fencing and screening and plantings, and, and overall, it seems to be that they, they'd like to take what they know, rather than an unknown future. And I think that's sort of behind all this in terms of, you know, and they've had, as you know, discussions in terms of impact on schools. There is a fiscal analysis that's been completed, there have been traffic studies that have been completed.
Very detailed.
And all those are available at the, the planning board's website, and also a telemedia who's provided extensive coverage on that, in terms of, you know, what would the implications be in terms of property tax revenue, you know, in terms of what the assessors would assess and the collector would, would receive, and also, you know, where we move with this project going forward. And as you noted, Evan, it was a significant acquisition cost, but also they had to remediate the site. There were those abandoned buildings from UMass West Campus, which not only had to be razed, but you also had hazardous materials in those buildings that had to be taken down and properly disposed of in appropriate, you know, landfills and so forth. So it's a significant investment, and I think you noted that, or was noted at the recent planning board meeting, that really this single-family residential really wouldn't give them the financial return. And so the concern is, it's either this type of use, or something that may be more challenging.
Right.
And I think, I think sometimes they, you know, the adage is, is, you know, rather go with what we know. So thank you for that coverage on that one. The last article is Article Six, and that, you touched upon it, the Choice of the Chelmsford Housing Authority with David Hetterson's, they're going to construct units at the site, I think it's 54, minimum of 54 units on a component of that site. And what they're seeking from the town is a contribution from the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund of $635,000. And $600,000 from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserve for the construction of that. And as noted on the slides and the screens, that 1.235 million, they think will leverage about $11 million in federal and state funding for the construction of the units. And also, the developer of this project is also putting in the infrastructure
Exactly.
to support that, because it is on the site. And so again, this, you know, when these units are completed, the, you know, it will help address the waiting list for this type of housing units. The units will be made for those who earn between 30% to 60% of the area median income. And basically, you're talking one-bedroom senior units of about 625 to 705 feet, you know, with the full kitchen and, you know, bedroom and so forth. So again, we thank you for the, watching our program today, and again, we welcome you to come out to town meeting on February 24th and have your voice heard. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Evan, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.